I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak.
Here.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Hannah.
Here.
Ms. Kane.
Here.
We also have Township Manager, Mrs. Teoli-Cools, Assistant Manager, Mr. Valla, Township Solicitor, Mr. Esposito, and Township Manager, Mr. Kessler, in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. A couple of announcements and special items. First, the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, April 18th at 2022 at 7:00 PM. Second, Item B, we have a Local Government Month proclamation. This is Local Government Month. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provide invaluable services to citizens of the communities they serve, and whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, the Pennsylvania General Assembly designated the week of April 11th through 15th, 2022, as Local Government Week in Pennsylvania. And whereas local government is often referred to as the level of government that is closest to the people, providing important citizen services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreational opportunities in public works. And whereas many individuals, including employees of the township and numerous volunteers, participate in providing local government services to the residents and businesses of Middletown Township. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we by the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors that April 2022 is hereby designated as Local Government Month in Middletown Township. And be it further proclaimed that we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, will continue to work to promote civic education and engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government, strengthen the sense of community, and engage the next generation of local government employees and volunteers." Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day, the 4th of April, 2022. Couple other announcements. We have upcoming events. Number one first is our Shred Event, and that's going to be Saturday, April 9th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the Oxford Valley Mall. And second, Earth Day. Earth Day is Saturday, April 23rd at 2022, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Court Creek Park. That's a great event at Court Creek Park for Earth Day. Great things for the kids to do, so certainly we encourage everybody to come out for that. And with that, we will move on to Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. This is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items only.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. The Chief wanted to make a quick comment.
Oh, certainly. Chief Barterella, I understand you want to make a quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kezak. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank some of the outside agencies that helped us last Thursday at Trooper Marty Mack's funeral. As you know, the procession went all the way from St. Michael's Church in Tullytown to Our Lady of Grace Cemetery in Middletown Township. So there were about 40 intersections, ramps, and road closures to staff, and even though we're the third-largest department in the county, it was quite a task just for us. So there were a lot of outside departments and agencies that stepped up, and I just wanted to recognize them so our Board of Supervisors would know who they are. First, just internally, I want to thank Captain Pete Feeney, who's here tonight, and our command staff. Pete did write the op orders for the entire route, so all the closures and everything, the state police really relied on Pete and our command staff to handle that. Pete did a fantastic job with that, and also staffed our motor detail and honor guard at the funeral. But as far as helping us, John Godziba, Chief of Langhorn Burrow, Sean Perry, Chief of Pendell, John Herms, the Chief of Newtown Township, and Steve Mawhinney, Chief of the County Park Rangers, they all gave us personnel. They all gave us officers and rangers to help staff some of the traffic posts. In fact, Sean Perry and I worked the same traffic post together, so Sean was out there himself. So was John Godziba from Langhorn Burrow. So I want to thank those chiefs and recognize those burrows and townships and the County Park Rangers for their great help. Langhorn Middletown Fire Police Captain Larry Harvey and Lieutenant Joe Gordon staffed two traffic posts with our signboard truck. They did an outstanding job. They were looking for work to do. We found it for them, and they did a great job, worked very hard during the detail. And finally, I do want to recognize our DPW. They're always out there with us for all these large events. They kind of are behind the scenes a little bit, but they were out there in force, bringing us cones, bringing us barricades, and they'll even block traffic if we're really stretched for a few minutes if they have to. Eric was out there hustling the entire event. Eric Gartenmeier and his crew were out there, and they were an invaluable help to us. So I just wanted the board to know all of the outside agencies and all of the help that we got for the funeral. So, and Ms. Payne, it's great. It's great to see you here at the board meeting.
Thank you, Chief. And certainly, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we do want to thank all of those departments and chiefs for their assistance. And thank you to your department, Captain Feeney, Department of Public Works, everybody that was involved. We really do appreciate it. So thank you, Chief, for recognizing them.
Yes, thank you for these few minutes. I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, so circling back to Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the Consent Agenda Items. Item A, consideration of authorizing payment of April 4, 2022 bills list in the amount of $507,355.71. And Item B, consideration of approving the March 21st, 2022 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion on the Consent Agenda Items?
I move to approve consent items, agenda items as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of approving the amended land development for Pravgo Pinegood Middletown LLC proposed Wawa 639 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorn, Pennsylvania, 19047. The original approval date being June 1st, 2021. Yes?
Good evening. You have my memo covering this agenda item in your packets. It's pretty simple, especially comparatively speaking when it comes to amendments to land development. And this particular amendment is specifically focused on two signs, two signs that were part of the initial approval from 2019. One of the signs, which they're calling the highway sign, is being relocated due to some physical constraints on the property, and then because of that relocation, another sign has to be relocated to a different location. So in order to maintain consistency with our township codes as well as state-level regulations, an amendment, an approval of an amended land development is required. As stated in the recommendation, if you concur, and the motion would be, I move to authorize approval of the amended preliminary final land development application for the Wawa at 639 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorn, PA, 19047. Approval of the amended application is specific to the two freestanding signs detailed on the proposed signage plan prepared by Bowler Engineering and dated October 29th, 2021. You have a copy of that plan in your meeting packets. Also, there are representatives from the Wawa if any questions are raised that are better suited for them to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. And these variants were approved by the zoning hearing board at their meeting on March 23rd, correct?
That's correct.
Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Ennis or from the representatives of the applicant? Seeing none, I can accept a motion.
I move to authorize approval of the amendment preliminary final land development application for the Wawa at 639 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorn, Pennsylvania, 19047. Approval of the amended application is specific to the two freestanding signs detailed on the proposed signage plan prepared by Bowler Engineering and dated October 29th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Next on the agenda... Thanks, gentlemen. Is this one you again, Mr. Ennis?
No.
Okay.
I stole his thunder. I apologize. I did the memo for him.
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Ennis. This is Item 6, consideration of adopting ordinance number 22-02, the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code in lieu of the previously adopted 2015 edition. Ms. Teoli-Cools.
As we have discussed at prior meetings, the state required an update from the 2015 edition to the 2018 edition for the UCC, the fire code, and property maintenance. We've already done the fire code. Mr. Esposito's team has put together this ordinance, which will update our International Property Maintenance Code. We do not need to make a change to the UCC code. It automatically updates. So this will bring us into compliance and check the box on this housekeeping item.
Thank you, Ms. Teoli-Cools. Are there any board questions for Ms. Teoli-Cools or Mr. Esposito, Mr. Ennis? And if not, I can accept a motion.
I move to authorize the adoption of ordinance 22-02, update the International Property Maintenance Code to the 2018 edition.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second? Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next on the agenda, Item Number 7, consideration of authorization to draft an update and advertise the Township Storm Water Management Ordinance. Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the MS4 program and our permits with DEP, every few years, there's updates to their model ordinance. For our ordinance sections, we have two that relate to storm water. One is Chapter 430, kind of a general storm water management ordinance. And then we also have our Chapter 431, which focuses on the Nishamity Creek, which has some additional requirements. So as part of the MS4 program requirements this year, put out by the DEP, they are requiring municipalities to update their ordinances with some kind of adjustments and updates they've made for their 2022 model ordinance. And this is a request that we would make those updates, advertise what the revisions are, and move forward with adopting the updates before the end of the summer. So we'll stay in compliance with our requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Kessler? And if not, I can accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the drafting and advertisement of updated storm water ordinances per the PA DEP and MS4 program requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase of one gallium steel dump body, one plow, one spreader for a total of $89,500. Mr. Gartenmeier.
Good evening, board members. If you recall, last meeting in February, we did purchase the chassis. You gave authorization for the chassis and cab for this vehicle. I did go back at that time because I thought the price of the body was too high, so we rebid everything with the body, the plow, the spreader. So we did save. There was a difference of like over nine grand. So this is the current bid that I would suggest we go with at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gartenmeier. I'm glad you waited. And am I correct that we still have RDA funds to cover the cost of the additional components?
That is correct. We got $240,000 from RDA in 2022 this year. So basically, that truck will be covered by that RDA grant.
Any other board members have questions for Mr. Gartenmeier? And if not...
No, I would just say thank you for doing some due diligence on pricing because...
At the time, everything was up high and starting to come back around, so...
Thank you.
You know, we usually don't do it that way, but...
Any other questions for Mr. Gartenmeier? And if not, I can accept a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of one one-gallon steel dump body, one plow, one spreader from HA Dorlart and Sun Thoroughfare, New Jersey, for a total of $89,500.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal and Ms. Payne. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartenmeier.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing purchase of an electric vehicle charging station at Steyer Orchard Market. Yes, Mr. Valla.
Good evening, board. Before you is a request to authorize two Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations. As the board might recall, the township currently has two of these stations, one in front of this building at Three Municipal Way in Langhorn, and one in front of our Public Works facility at 700 Veterans Highway in Levittown. We are hoping to install two additional Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations in front of the Steyer's Market. When the parking lot was getting repaved this summer, there was some electrical infrastructure work to help prepare the site for future installation of these charging stations. There is a rebate program available called Driving PA Forward, managed by DEP. This is actually grant funding that was set aside from the Volkswagen settlement from their emissions lawsuit that they faced. And so the township is able to get a rebate of a total of about $16,000 for these two stations. So the total cost of the project is about $41,400. Net the $16,000 rebate, the township faces a total direct cost of about $25,442.
Are we projecting costs in the future?
I'm sorry?
Could be costs in the future for maintenance or any additional costs in the future that...
Sure. There would be a small fee for the subscription service, which is currently built in for the first three years of the cost. The subscription program is less than $1,000. The stations generally have about a 10 to 15-year life expectancy to them. And then township does charge anyone who's using the station for use of that station, which we have the rate set currently to offset the cost of the electric plus some of those additional administrative expenses. And we have the control to change that price at any given time.
Do we know how that price is in reference to other electric stations in the township?
Sure. There's not very many electric vehicle charging stations in the township. There's only, I'm aware of, one other set at the Giant on New Falls Road. I don't know exactly what their fee is. We currently charge 18 cents per kilowatt hour. As I understand it, that's probably just a little bit below the average. If you go to a Level 3 charging station, which is the fast charger, those are the ones that charge your car in like a half hour, those tend to cost more just because it, the stations are more expensive and they use a little bit more energy to get that done quicker. And so as I understand, our rates are a little bit below average, but we can certainly do an assessment and make that adjustment if we need to.
What's our process for understanding what rates we should charge? How like do we look at them on an annual basis, quarterly, and how do we do that benchmarking against market?
Sure. Typically, how we set our rates is based upon the township's energy cost, and we add in a small administrative fee to it. We can certainly evaluate that. The stations have been, the two that we have have been up for about two years, and we can certainly assess before these go in about what those rates should be.
Do we get, I'm just wondering, curious, do we get a lot of people coming in, charging them right now, and are we advertising this?
Yeah, we do advertise periodically. Currently, with the two stations we have, we get about 15 unique users a month, and that can fluctuate from, you know, as low as 10. We've seen as high as more than 35 unique users. And we do see that people tend to use them frequently, especially for those who are within walking distance. They can drop their car there for a few hours or sometimes even overnight, and then come back and get it the next day.
So what we're being asked to authorize tonight is just the purchase of the charging stations, the rate that ultimately will be set, which as you said, would cover the cost of electricity plus the built-in administrative costs. That is something that can be determined at a later time, and that's adjustable?
Correct. Yeah, purchase and installation of the stations for tonight.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Valla?
Currently, we're getting a rebate, and that rebate may not be offered for going forward.
Correct. And actually, the rebate, since we did the first two stations two years ago, the rebate has gone down a little bit. And we expect that there will still be some rebate long-term, but as electric vehicles become more common and station construction is more common, we do expect that rebate to go down over the long term.
Any other questions for Mr. Valla, or I can accept a motion?
I move to authorize application to the Driving PA Forward Electric Vehicle Charging Station Rebate Program and authorization of the purchase of two electric vehicle charging stations from National East Solutions in the amount of $41,442.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any other board questions at this time? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Valla. I think you're sticking around, right?
Mm-hmm.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing an electricity supply agreement for township electrical accounts. Mr. Valla.
Thank you. Yeah, so we're keeping the conversation on electricity tonight. So about every three years, the township works with our broker to shop the market for electric supply. For those who don't know, in Pennsylvania, users have the ability to shop for their electric supply. So essentially, PICO is still the lines and the cables that are supplying your energy or that are delivering your energy, and you still pay them as part of your bill. But Pennsylvania residents and businesses have the option to choose their supplier. And so the township does that, and we do see a pretty substantial reduction compared to the general PICO market rate. With a lot of the global conditions going on, inflation, global conflict, we are seeing that the price of energy is increasing, and we don't expect that to slow down anytime soon. The township is currently in an electrical supply contract that ends in April of next year, April 23, and what we're recommending is to enter into a new contract to take effect of May of 2023. So we're still locked in at our current rate for about another year, and so what we're recommending is getting a new electric supply contract to take effect a year from now. Currently, we have a provision in our contract that essentially protects the township from if we ever had a massive increase in our electric usage. We've worked with our broker to review our account, and we haven't seen month over month a change more than about 20% in our demand. And so we have found that that additional coverage that the township has on our current contract isn't really valuable for us, that the lower level of coverage that other contracts offer is sufficient for us. And so removing that stipulation saves the township about $650 a month in our supply, or at least on the new contract. And as part of that savings, what we're recommending is actually looking at going 100% green energy with our supplies. That would be getting energy from renewable resources, solar, wind, and the like. And so the market increase, it's about 30% more than what we're seeing now. And regardless of whether or not we go to green energy or anything like that, that's what the market price is currently, and we expect that to only get worse as the year goes on. And there's also another factor. In the month of June, the township, there's a factor that helps calculate that supply that's going to be changing in June. We expect it to be not in our favor, which is furthermore reason to want to lock in a new contract now instead of waiting until later in the year. And just for those who are wanting to do the math, the township's current rate is .05282 cents per kilowatt hour, and the new, the recommended, which would have removal of that usage protection as well as going 100% green, would be a new rate of about .06899.
So the recommendation is that we would eliminate the usage provision from the new contract, and then that savings would offset the increase by the move to green energy?
That's correct.
And the reason, the rationale for doing this now, even though it's not going to take effect until essentially a year from now, is what? Remind me again?
Sure. So the market conditions, we've favored for the last about six years from what we would say is artificially low market conditions. If you go back to 2014, the township is paying almost point, or essentially eight cents a kilowatt hour or just under. And so we're still going to be under what we were paying for electric six or eight years ago. But market conditions are driving that price up with national and global inflation. You know, the energy market is being severely impacted by global conflict, and there's a couple of other factors from our research. And as we wait into the summer months, that generally you see the prices go up then. And just with how fast prices are surging even in the last couple of months, we don't expect it to slow down anytime soon.
So you want to lock it in while we can?
Yes.
And is there any provision within the contract that, you know, that protects us, given that we are doing three years in advance, if that market rate does go much lower than what we're paying? Is there any provision that we could reset or look at the market?
Sure. So unfortunately not. So that's part of doing these kinds of supply contracts, is you're locking in a specific rate for a specific term. You do have the option to shop for a smaller, a shorter-term contract, but those rates are generally higher. And so the reason why we brought forward the 36-month is that was kind of in the right sweet spot of long enough to help, you know, bring down the long-term cost, but not so short that we're paying that additional cost.
And are we, and so, you know, based on what the brokers told us, right, that energy is going to be increasing, are we, can we be sure that like we're not paying the really high inflation now and getting us locked in at a higher rate? You know, as, just because people are, you know, they know that the conflicts are rising, they know inflation's high, and just that perception of let's lock in a rate so that it doesn't go any higher?
Sure. I mean, what we're seeing right now is that the volatility is really at a maximum. In the last, I did the natural gas contracts about a year ago, and even with our predecessor, you would see that prices would, you know, barely, barely change at all from even month to month. And what we're seeing even in the last couple of days, it's gone up, you know, a fraction of a cent. And so that's why we're looking to lock in now. And I should also mention, too, that this contract does have a provision in it. There's no material adverse change, is the technical term, which means if we were to have a, you know, significant change, such as if we were to put solar on the municipal building, which is something that the board has considered, that would not impact our current rate, even if our, if we have a huge reduction in our supply needs.
That's great. And I just want to comment that I, I mean, personally, I'm very excited about the idea of going to 100% green energy, which obviously is right in line and consistent with the Climate Action Plan that we adopted here. So I think this is fantastic. Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Valla?
But on that comment, do we think that going 100% right now is, you know, one of the things that I want to talk through is, you know, it's a newer energy, right? It's, it's not many people have gone into it. I love the idea of going 100% green, but are we, are we locking in too early? And do we think as supply, as demand increases, you know, more people are going, more energy companies are going to get into the green business, and that competition is going to drive the market down?
Sure. True answer is it could go both ways. What we've seen in the last five years is what was about a tenth of a cent more for green energy has driven all the way up to about six tenths of a cent. If we were to go 100% across all of our accounts, about two weeks ago, that actually dropped down to about four tenths of a cent, which is really the first time you've seen that drop recently. And this is only applies to our current contract. So in, you know, three years or however long until we do our next contract, the board would essentially have the option then to either continue with 100% green if we do it now, or if they wanted to reduce it to a lower level. And that factor can always change. But since, especially right now, we've seen it drop from point, oh, sorry, six tenths of a cent to four tenths of a cent, we are suggesting to take advantage of that change.
And we don't think it's going to drop anymore and get more...
It doesn't seem like it. There are some states out there that have a state mandate that a certain percentage of energy users be on a certain percentage of amount of green energy. That really drives the price up. We don't yet have that in Pennsylvania. We're not expecting to. So we're favoring from that lack of a mandate. But yes, that could drive prices up, and then, as you said, more businesses getting into green energy could drive it down.
Gotcha. And we haven't, you know, these are the rates that our broker, our current broker, has provided us, but we haven't shopped the rates on other brokers at this point.
Correct. The township has used this broker since about 2016, as I understand it. When we moved to this broker, we were paying about 30% more with a prior broker. And so we have confidence in them, and we can certainly, if the board would like, look at other brokers if we need to.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Valla? And if not, I can accept a motion. And if not, I can accept a motion. I move to authorize township staff to enter into an agreement with Free Point Energy Solutions to supply electricity for a term of 36 months, beginning May 1, 2023. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Passes for one. Thank you, Mr. Valla.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valla. I think it's a little too soon, but thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to other business. Mr. Kessler.
Just like to echo Chief's comments, it's really great to see Supervisor Payne here with us tonight and everybody, and just want to wish everyone happy holidays this month. Who's celebrating?
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mr. Esposito.
Yes, I want to announce that the board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters. And if Mr. Kezak and Mrs. Corporal can stay behind after the meeting, I have a few agreements for you to sign.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Ms. Teoli Cools.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kane.
I just wanted to thank all of our residents of Middletown that came out for the trooper to support the trooper and his family. And I really appreciate everyone taking their time out of their day, and nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Hannah.
I just wanted to say that I was happy to see Supervisor Payne here today as well. Thank you to Middletown Police Department for helping with state trooper Mac and the procession. And then also plug for Parks and Rec. April 16 is Community Cleanup Day. Make sure you go online and sign up. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Payne.
I just want to say it's nice to meet Supervisor Kane in person for the first time. Ms. Hannah, I've known before, but also nice to do this in person. I would like to say I prepared something, but I did not, myself included, for how odd this is to be in person, right? I haven't been here probably almost a year, barely been out of my house. So it's nice to reintegrate into society and see friendly faces and, you know, feel the support of the community in person and not just through the screen over there. I just can't thank everybody enough for how much love and compassion that has been shown to me over the last seven months. We're still not out of the woods, but we're doing a lot better, and I'm really glad to be able to have the opportunity to sit up here because, you know, seven months ago, I wasn't quite sure where the road would lead. So thank you, everyone, and thanks for the support, and see you again next in two weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Yeah, it's been a long and strange road coming back from the days of COVID when we were doing everything virtually to sort of slowly getting back up to full capacity and then having everybody back. But I can honestly say it truly has not been the same without you up here, and it's really, really great to have the band back together. So it's great to see you. Don't go anywhere, and we're glad that, you know, you're doing well and you were able to come out and join us in person because it really has not felt the same since you haven't been up here. So welcome back. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. No, second.
Thank you. We're adjourned.